Good evening and welcome to the January nineteenth City Council meeting. I would like to call this meeting to order. Please be advised that FATV is conducting audio and video recording of this meeting for public broadcast. If there is, oh, no, never mind. And councillor Boishman, would you please lead us in the salute to the flag?
Be an honor. I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
The following councillors have logged in and are present for tonight's meeting. President Zarella, councillor Boishman, councillor Kuchar, councillor Gina Tally, councillor Fleming, councillor Green, councillor Kusmeric, councillor Schultz, councillor Squalia, councillor Van Hazinga, and councillor Walsh.
Thank you. I would like to seek unanimous consent to suspend any rules of this council or of our parliamentary authority that are in conflict with either the remote participation format or the state guidance on remote participation during the COVID nineteen pandemic.
So moved.
Seeing no objection. Those rules are duly suspended. The public has been advised to contact the city clerk's office by noon today regarding any comments of more than, of no more than two minutes. And none have been brought to our attention other than city officials attending. Accordingly, public forum is closed. We will now hear a report from the Appointments Committee.
Thank you, President Zarella. Tonight, the Appointments Committee met and heard one appointment, a new appointment to the Conservation Commission of Mr Mark F. Christian, and the Appointments Committee voted five to zero to unanimously approve.
It is for the council.
Make a motion.
Have a motion and seconds to accept the report of the committee and its recommendations. We will do this by unanimous consent if there's no objection. Seeing none, it passes unanimously. I would like to apologize to the council and to the public. At the previous meeting, I should have recused myself from the Appointments Committee report, seeing as there were zoning board members being reappointed, which is a board on which I sit. If there is any member of the council that would like to reconsider that vote, I would be open to doing so, however it was unanimous at the time, so I will leave it to the discretion of my fellow councillors, if there is any objection. Seeing none. Excuse me?
I don't have any objection.
Okay, thank you. Seeing no objection, moving on, we'll hear a report from the committee on records, councillor Squalia.
We have reviewed the records and they appear to be in order.
If there is no objection, we will. I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
If there is no objection, we will accept that by unanimous consent. Seeing none. We have a new appointment letter from his honor, the mayor, appointing Mr James McGrath, or reappointing Mr James McGrath as a member of the Board of Park Commissioners, term to expire April first, twenty twenty-five, and appointing actually, I'm sorry. Mr Mayor, I believe there was an email sent to the council saying that only two of these individuals were actually being appointed as student police officers and that we would be informed as to which those two would be. Has that decision been made yet?
I wasn't aware of that, councillor.
I could have that wrong. Is there a Mr Hare, do you have any, or Solicitor Pistori, do you have any additional information on that? Am I, am I just getting that wrong entirely?
I, I don't know. It's the first I hear of it.
Likewise.
Madam Clerk, is this, is this an accurate agenda?
It is, sir, but we are waiting for the three candidates to go through some last minute training at the, and they have to meet their physical fitness goals. So I don't believe we've heard who has passed that yet.
Right. That's the way I read it.
Yep.
Well, in that case, I would suggest that we send the appointment letter for all three to the Appointments Committee and let the committee handle it from there.
Second. Make a motion when you send it to committee.
Second. All right. And if there is no objection, that is done. We also have two promotions of officers Stephen D. Bastian and Michael E. Lopez to the position of Permanent Police Sergeant for the Pittsburgh Police Department. Those do not need to be forwarded to committee. They are promotions from within. And if, if the council does not object, I'd actually like to move through our orders before we conduct the public hearing, because the hearing could go lengthy and the orders should be very, very fast.
No objection here.
Excellent. We have two orders finance, both for, both stand referred to the Finance Committee. We have a petition, Unitil, Pittsburgh Gas and Electric Company for proposed new poll number eight on McIntyre Road that I would like to entertain a motion to send that to a public hearing on February sixteenth, please.
So moved.
Second. I have a motion and seconds. If there is no objection, it is referred. And now we have a public hearing on zero twenty-nine twenty, Pittsburgh Planning Board to amend the Pittsburgh zoning ordinance as part of Phase One of, sorry, Phase Two of an ordinance to, of an ordinance update to make clarifications in the table of principal uses, remove internal inconsistencies and conflicts with state law, clarify definitions, make procedural changes, and set the, oh, I'm sorry, I think this has been copied over from the Phase One wording. Anyway, zoning ordinance changes, bundle one of Phase Two. Before I declare the hearing open, I'd just like to note a few procedural technicalities. There are three bundles in Phase Two, and for statutory reasons, we have to make a final decision on them within a certain timeframe of when the hearing is closed. So we will not be closing the hearing tonight. We will be continuing it to a future session of the council. But this is ideally the only public hearing we will be conducting on the, on bundle one of Phase Two. So if there are any questions, comments, amendments, et cetera, on bundle one, this is the time to raise them. It will not be revisited at the subsequent public hearings. With that said, I declare the hearing open and we have Mr Tom Skrowski to present the changes to the council.
Good evening councillors, and thank you for that introduction, councillor Zarella. I'm, I'm going to try to share my screen. Oh, it looks like participant screen sharing may be disabled here. I'm not sure if that could be. It looks like it's enabled now. Great. I want to share my screen just to walk through the changes we'll be discussing this evening. You all see a PowerPoint on, on your screens right now?
Yes.
Excellent. So as councillor Zarella had noted, we're going to be discussing tonight the first of the three bundles. I'm having difficulty with my screen. I have a feeling it's different than what you all are seeing. If you just bear with me a second. Try to solve for this.
Take your time.
Okay, great. So, you know, you, the council had first seen the first phase of zoning changes this summer. Just as a reminder, though, we've been at this for about a year now in partnership with about a twenty-member advisory committee and a twelve-person working group composed of members of the planning board, the City Council, the ZBA, members of the business community, and resident members. And it's, you know, it's been a really long deliberative process. And ultimately, we was determined to break this into two big phases. The first phase, which is already what we've passed through, I would call more kind of administrative, removing the inconsistencies, errors, removing redundancy, condensing, clarifying. We're past that. The, the City Council had voted on that already. That's now our current zoning ordinance. Phase Two, if Phase One was more administrative, Phase Two is more transformative. These are big map changes, use and dimensional changes, and these are really the pieces that, that came out of our Economic Development Strategic Plan to, you know, enhance our economic competitiveness, to create more opportunities for for commercial, industrial, and housing growth throughout the city. And ultimately, it was determined because of the complexity of Phase Two and everything that it brought to, to it. You know, members of our working group and advisory committee had recommended we break this up into three subsets, what we're calling bundles. And, you know, essentially have it be one continued public hearing. But for sake of simplicity, there'll be three separate discussions with the planning board and the City Council on three separate groupings of Phase Two, just because it is so complicated. And I just want to walk you through quickly what the bundles are. We don't have, we're not going to talk about all these today, but I want to let you all see the roadmap. So tonight, we'll talk about some purpose statement revisions from our commercial districts, the merging of non-conforming lots, the floodplain zoning amendment, non-substantive zoning changes, merging RA one and RA two, temporary portable storage, artisanal food and artisanal manufacturing, solar arrays, and marijuana transporters. Bundle two, and you'll notice each bundle gets more complex as we go along. Bundle two is accessory dwelling units, what some people might think of as in-law apartments, infill development, agricultural and related uses, multifamily development, drive-throughs, off-street parking, signs, and some changes to the RC District, which is our most dense urban residential district. And then bundle three looks at industrial districts and will make some pretty big changes to how we classify those. Bundle three will look at map changes, basically changing the boundaries of our zoning districts. Bundle three will look at dimensional changes, which governs, you know, everything from building heights to setbacks and all of the dimensions that, you know, change according to what zoning district you're in. And then any other unaddressed items. I know, you know, for example, councillor Boishman had brought up a question of used car sales and, and used car lots and it came up too late to be addressed and everything else, but we did commit to bringing that on to bundle three. And then finally, bundle three will really entail tying up any loose ends, dotting our i's, crossing our t's, to make sure everything is, you know, now that bundle one and two, all those changes have been made, we got to make sure things are consistent across the board. So again, today, bundle one is sort of the least complex, but we'll be building up to something more complicated. As we go along, the intent will be March second is where the council would be visiting the bundle two and then March sixteenth is bundle three. And of course, before the council looks at this, the planning board will have made a recommendation, Legislative Affairs will have made a recommendation. And actually, for bundle two and three, the Economic Development Committee will be looking at those as well. So what we're going to be talking about tonight is bundle one. And I'll basically go through each of the subsets here. There are four instances where the Legislative Affairs Committee made additional recommendations above and beyond what the planning board submitted in their report and what the City Council looked at in, in the meeting materials for this evening's meeting. In those four instances, I'll sort of take a pause and look at what those changes were that were proposed by Legislative Affairs.
Tom, can I pause you for just one moment?
Of course.
First, I just want to note for the council, you may have been about to mention this anyway, but that we're going to take each of these headings separately. We will have opportunity for question and discussion after each of them, rather than trying to address them all at once. But also, I see councillor Green wishes to speak. Is this something that is you know, that you want to address now, or is this something that would be better postponed until we're in the question portion?
I can certainly wait. It has to do with the application requirements, so I'll leave that up to the chair if they want to take it now or at the end.
Yes, that will, that will definitely come in during one of these sections.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, Tom, thank you. You can continue.
No, good clarification. So I'll run through these line by line. And guys, it's, it's tough for me to see faces while I'm presenting at the same time. So if people do have questions or anything, please just make sure to let me know as we're, as we're going along. I'll try to do my best to answer everything as we go along.
Just put it in the box and I will make sure to call on councillors, you know, in the proper order and time.
Appreciate it. Thank you. So Phase Two Purpose Statement Revisions. So there are really a couple of key things, adjustments that were made here. Our Economic Development Strategic Plan had noted that we needed to better differentiate our commercial districts. So this is the first step to doing that. If you recall, in our current zoning ordinance, we have, I think, eight different central business districts. If we have eight central business districts, they all cease to be central, right? They're scattered throughout. And we're basically treating John Fitch the same as we're treating Wayland Street as we're treating downtown. And they, they're different commercial districts. We want to treat them differently and distinctly. So in, in this section, we actually created a new downtown business district, which will be in a sense, in essence, the central business district downtown. We'll, we'll look at the map in bundle three. But for now, we're just changing the purpose statement. And the downtown business district will essentially be a district for pedestrian-oriented uses in an urban downtown. The neighborhood business district purpose statement was addressed to reflect what an MBD should be, which is a commercial district that's housed within a neighborhood. A great example of that would be in Ward Two, you know, on Daniel Street in the Cleggorn neighborhood. That's a great neighborhood business district. It's a commercial strip housed within a broader neighborhood. And then finally, commercial districts themselves are really those districts that are, are more auto-oriented in uses like the John Fitches of, of the world. So the idea here in this first grouping, we adjusted those purpose statements, and then in the later bundles, the map changes, the dimensional changes, the use statements would follow. But I wanted to make sure that we all have buy-in that these are sort of what we wanted to see with regard to our commercial districts only. And the Legislative Affairs voted on this unanimously, so there are no changes from, from them.
All right. So any, any questions, comments, concerns on this element of the proposed changes? If there are none, the way we're going to do this, because we need to keep the hearing open at the end, is I'm going to ask for a vote or for a motion to express the sense of the council, essentially, that this is a change that we are comfortable moving forward with. But again, we will not be taking a final binding vote and closing the hearing until after we have all three bundles in front of us.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and second to approve these changes or to express the approval of the council for these changes. If there are no objections, I will, we will do it by unanimous consent. Hearing no objections, that motion passes. And you may proceed, Mr Skrowski.
Thank you. The next grouping is merging of non-conforming lots. This was a small clause that just stated merging of non-conforming lots shall be considered merged for zoning purposes. The red statement is what was added. It just shouldn't, you know, be lots that are right beside each other that have different owners. Of course, they shouldn't be merged for zoning purposes, but this statement clarifies that. So if two lots are right beside each other that don't conform with our zoning and they're owned by the same person, they're considered merged for zoning purposes, which was always the intent of our ordinance. It just clarifies that. But you might know also, there is a, an asterisk here, which means there was a slight adjustment made by the Legislative Affairs Committee, which I will pull up now. I hope. Let me. You all see merging of non-conforming lots amendment or document here?
Yes.
Excellent. So there is just one small change added. Non-conforming lots held in common ownership with contiguous lots shall be considered merged for zoning purposes. It's really a semantic change. And councillor Zarella, I think you had proposed this. I don't know if you want to make any mention of why, but this was different than what you saw in your meeting packet.
Yes, thank you. This was just as, as Mr Skrowski says, it was a clarification, not really a substantive change. It was just to make it clearer that you don't have to have two contiguous non-conforming lots in order to have a merger. You could also have a non-conforming lot contiguous with a conforming lot, and it would merge in so that it can't then be reconveyed separately. That's already the case for sort of deed purposes and whatnot in many instances. This just clarifies that is the case for zoning purposes. So I would like to entertain a motion to adopt that amendment if oh, councillor Green, you have a comment, question?
Yeah, specifically to this before we move on. I, I just want to make sure that I'm understanding this as we move forward in my mind, because we have run into several occasions where we've had two side yard sales programs that, you know, owner one takes half of the lot, you know, for side yard sales and wants to combine it together in their deed of property in one lot now versus a lot and a half. So I, I just want to make sure that this would be the place to address that or that we are making sure now that that either this has to do with side lot sales or this has nothing to do with side lot sales as we move forward with new zoning conditions.
No, go ahead. Go ahead, Tom.
I'm going to let you take this one because you can probably answer it more eloquently than me.
I'm not sure about that, but I'll try. To my understanding, this would not directly affect the side yard sales or anyone's deed. This is not an ordinance concerning sale of property or anything like that. This simply clarifies that for zoning purposes, those would be considered one lot than the, the chunk of the side yard combined with the original lot would be considered one lot for zoning purposes. And then if they were to try splitting it apart again somehow or other, zoning would still consider it to be one lot.
Okay, and would that be the case even with commercial and industrial zonings now and in the future with these changes?
There is. Yeah, yes, there, I see nothing in the ordinance that would restrict it to residential.
Okay, thank you.
Councillor Boishman?
One quick question because I'm having a hard time to understand it too. I own a, a non-conforming lot. Would I be allowed to sell that non-conforming lot? If you're going to combine this?
Sometimes. The answer is sometimes. You know, I don't know your lot and I couldn't give you a legal opinion on it right now anyway, but the idea behind this ordinance or behind merger doctrine in general would be if you just have a non-conforming lot, that's just a non-conforming lot. That's fine. But if you have a non-conforming lot that's, but let's say you, councillor Boishman, have your house.
Right.
And you purchase a small, you know, hundred square foot parcel next to your yard. You can't then sell that hundred foot parcel again as a hundred foot parcel. It would become part of your yard. And it would become part of your whole lot. That's basically merger in a nutshell.
Okay, so yeah, how far, how high do you go? Up to five thousand square feet? Or what?
I would depend on the district and the use. Certainly, I, I think anything below five thousand is, I believe, non-conforming for all purposes. Councillor Van Hazinga, were you intending to address that directly or is that, or do you have a separate question?
I, I just have a bit of a clarification. In your hypothetical example, nothing would still prevent Mr Boishman from selling his hundred square foot lot next door. The only catch is it would no longer be considered a pre-existing non-conforming lot. Because if you have a lot that is pre-existing and it doesn't meet current zoning requirements, you can still build on it because it existed before the requirements were put in place. But what this does is it prevents people from combining non-conforming lots or getting a series of non-conforming lots that are adjacent to each other and then still developing them as non-conforming. Because once you have several lots that combine and merge under this ordinance, they become conforming lots. And that, that's basically their part. So anybody can still sell any bit of property they want, but their pre-existing status changes if it's held in common ownership with an adjacent lot.
Yes, thank you. That is the better way of putting it. I mean, kind of a hash of it, but thank you. That's a, that's a very accurate description.
And so with that change, it passed Legislative Affairs unanimously.
So can I get a motion on the Legislative Affairs change?
So moved. Second.
Okay, I have a motion and seconds to amend the proposal per the change made by Legislative Affairs as displayed on screen at the moment. If there is no objection, we'll do this under unanimous consent. Seeing no objection, it is amended. Any further questions or comments on the total package as amended?
I, I have a question on something we didn't discuss yet. I don't know if we're getting to more.
Oh, yes, we're definitely going further to other items. I just meant the total package of the non-conforming lots alteration. Okay, so in that case, I would like to, again, entertain a motion to express the council's approval of this change going forward.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and second. If there is no objection, we'll take this by unanimous consent. Seeing none, the motion passes and you may proceed to the next section, Tom.
Alrighty, the next section, floodplain zoning amendment. This actually is really just a requirement from FEMA and from DCR for the floodplain insurance program. We participate in it. We need to make these changes. This was frankly just one. We were under the hood. We were making zoning changes. And DCR and FEMA were basically telling us we needed to make this change, so not a great deal of autonomy here that we have. If we want to continue to participate in the floodplain insurance program, we need to basically adjust this section of our ordinance accordingly. And this had no amendments from Legislative Affairs in pass as this.
Councillor Boishman?
I got one question for Tom S. My question, not too long ago, the city of Pittsburgh received some grant to educate and train people on the flood zones and make recommendations because there was more than one area. Are they still going to be involved in this floodplain thing on the recommendations that they find? And we got a big grant from a a while ago on this, anyway, if I recall right.
Counselor, um, I don't, I I'm gathering from his expression that. Mr. Skroski doesn't have that information in front of him because it's really not related to the zoning change that we're considering. Uh, but if it comes up uh at a later date or if you'd like to contact uh the city offices. Tomorrow morning, uh, I'm sure that information can be provided.
The one thing I would add is FEMA is currently undergoing a map revision basically as to what's within the floodplain. Um, and they were supposed to have it done last spring. It's taken longer like everything else these days, but. Um, when it does come out, there'll be significant changes to what's included in the floodplain. Um, I'm not sure if that's what you're referring to. That's the the closest estimate I would have for you, but we can always talk. Uh, you know.
I think I'll I'll talk to you tomorrow then about it.
Okay.
I know, alright.
Sounds good.
Alright, if there are no further questions, I'd like to entertain a motion to express approval of this change.
So moves.
I have a motion and second. If there is no objection, we'll take it by unanimous consent. Seeing none, motion passes and you may proceed.
Alrighty, the uh next amendment allows the Community Development and Planning Director, um, me. Uh, to update figures, photos, scrivners errors, et cetera, with a super majority approval of the planning board. And with the submission of a report to City Council. Um, so this basically is, you know, normally. If we found small mistakes in our zoning ordinance, we'd have to go through the whole ordinance process, which is. Submitting a petition to council, getting referred to planning board for a recommendation. Um, then going to the council committees and and in each step getting a a super majority approval. Um, and it's a, it's a lengthy, arduous process. What this is basically saying is for small mistakes. We need to correct a reference. We need to dot an I, cross a T. It's just a simple vote of the planning board. A report gets submitted to City Council, um, and and then provided there are no issues with that report. Um, it would then, i- it's a quicker way to update our ordinance essentially. This is one space where there's a small change requested by the council and I've already kind of alluded to it. Um, I'll pull that change up now. Um, so what what the council had seen was basically this statement here. Um, and you know, basically was added a two thirds approval of the planning board as opposed to a simple majority of approval. And subject to the following expedited procedure for City Council approval. The planning board shall transmit to the City Council report of any such clerical changes made. Such reports shall be accepted without debate. Following council meeting unless any object uh counselor shall make a motion to contest the changes. If such motion is made and seconded, it shall be voted without debate. And if it passes, the matter shall be placed on the agenda for the next following meeting. When it shall be considered without the need for a referral to any committee, though such referral may be made by motion or by unanimous consent. Um, so it adds another step to the process, basically keeping the council apprised of of these adjustments. Um, and and I think the idea being if I'm correcting a typo that can't get a two thirds majority approval. Of the planning board and it can't get unanimous consent by the council. Maybe it's not a typo. Maybe there's something more significant to the, to it than that. Um, but anyway, I'll I'll take questions here.
Counselor Green, uh, I will ask that everyone use the box, please, because with the screen share up, I can only see a few of you along the side. Uh, you just happen to be one of the lucky ones, Counselor Green.
Yeah, winning all day. Um, I just wanna say that how much that I appreciate the um transparency. With this, even though it it looks like a small change, but in the bigger picture, it's just another another level of. Transparency that, right, if it's not a clerical error, maybe there is something more that needs to be. Uh, further scrutinized. So again, I just wanna say that I I appreciate that very much.
Thank you. I have Counselor Squalia.
Yes, I I just have one question. Um, why is it revised to have no debate?
It's uh, Counselor, it's not no debate. It's that the motion to object to the change is without debate. Um.
Right.
The actual substantive change itself, if it does get referred to the next meeting. Would be a normal matter for the council that would have normal rules for debate. Uh, the reason for it to be without debate is simple, is simply that. It's supposed to be an expedited process, so if there isn't more than one or two counselors who have an issue with the change. Uh, we wanna go to a vote quickly and not have it, uh, you know, bog down our proceeding, our proceedings. Uh, if there is some substantial desire to reconsider the change or to object to it. Then it would go on the next agenda and would have a full uh discussion of it. If there are no further questions or comments, I'd entertain a motion to amend as outlined. Alright, I have a motion and a second. Uh. If there are no objections, we will take that by unanimous consent. Seeing no objection, it is amended. Uh, and if there are no further questions or comments on the amended. Uh, provision, then I would entertain a motion uh to express approval.
I moved.
I have a motion and second. If there are no objections. The motion passes by unanimous consent. And you may proceed.
Next up is the merging of the RA one and RA two residential districts. Um, and the reason for it is. You know, the basically clarify and condense our ordinance so it's a little bit more legible. Um, the RA one and RA two, they have the exact same purpose already. Um, they have no differences in the table of principal use regulations, which means. You can build everything in an RA one that you can build in an RA two. The only difference is some dimensional requirements, which I'll show you now. Um, so the RA one district has a slightly larger minimum lot area. Slightly larger minimum lot frontage a- as well as front yard, side yard and rear yard. Um, what we would be doing by merging these two districts is essentially creating one district, the RA district. That would have the less restrictive of the two dimensional regulations, so. Instead of the the RA district would have all of the components of RA two essentially.
Questions, comments? Seeing none, I'd like to entertain a motion to, oh, excuse me, I have a Counselor Green.
Uh, sorry, I wasn't quick enough on that.
Oh, quite alright.
And, um. Is that in hopes that the um smaller lot lot size will allow for. More single family, one level, like a ranch site, like a small ranch or. A small cape on those? What, what's the purpose of minimizing the lot square footage?
Good question. Um, so that that is somewhat the purpose to, you know, what we did is we looked. At the the land areas of of the different parcels in RA one and RA two and they're very similar. Um, and so what we ended up sort of thinking is, well, if if the parcels are roughly identical here. And the neighborhoods feel the same, why do we make it more difficult to build a home in RA one? Than in RA two? It it seems somewhat arbitrary, so it was a little bit of making it easier to build. Within RA, within the RA district at large and also to make the zoning ordinance just a little bit easier to understand. Um, when you look at a map and you have these two districts that seem somewhat arbitrary and you've got. It's hard to know where the boundaries lie between the two. It just makes it a little bit simpler. Um, and so that's the.
Uh, thank you again. I I appreciate that moving forward.
I have Counselor Bochman?
And on this change here, RA one to RA two. Uh, my question is, is that for the outskirts of the city where they don't have storage? Or is that for, because it says up here minimum lot area without storage? I see it on the top district on top of that thing.
Yep, and so just to clarify. The new district will be called the RA district. It will just take all the dimensional requirements of what we now call the RA two. But if you kind of look throughout the the dimensional table. All minimum lot areas without municipal sewer are sixty five thousand square feet.
Right.
So that's, that's just a requirement if you have a septic system, basically.
Right. Alright, okay. And that's not changing, just to be clear.
Alright. Okay, thank you.
Welcome.
Alright, any further questions? Alright, I'd like to entertain a motion of approval.
So moved.
Alright, I have a motion and second. If there are no objections. It passes by unanimous consent.
Great.
Next section.
Next up, we have artisanal food and artisan manufacturing. And this is really, it's one amendment, but it's sort of two small subsets within. Um, so first, our artisan food allows for breweries, distilleries and bakeries. Um, the zoning's currently kind of silent on those items. Um, you might note that we have two breweries that have been approved and one, of course, that exists at River Sticks. Um, and let's just say there was some interpretational leaps to get us there. This makes it explicit in our zoning that these are things that are allowed. Um, they're allowed by right in the limited industrial and industrial district in this designation. And they would be allowed by right if they were less than seventy five hundred square feet in the downtown business district, neighborhood business district. And the commercial district. And just as a point of reference, both River Sticks. And the the brewery that's being built out uh on Summer Street are both less than seventy five hundred square feet, just to give you an idea of scale. Um, and then it would be allowed by special permit in the RC district, the mill conversion overlay, the FSU district. And anything larger than seventy five hundred square feet, it would be a special permit in the the DBD, the MBD and the commercial district. Um, so that's artisan food. Um, now artisan manufacturing. This allows for smaller scale manufacturing that contains minimal negative externalities. So a great example of that would be Teacher Lock. Um, which is, you know, right at the old Sentinel Building. Yeah, it's manufacturing and they're manufacturing products, but it's not manufacturing in the traditional sense where. You get the, you know, these loud noises and emissions and sound that's really disturbing to the surrounding area. Basically, it's manufacturing that you can't really tell it's happening because the externalities aren't there. So this would be allowed by right in the industrial, limited industrial and the commercial district. Smaller developments, again, less than seventy five hundred square feet, like Teacher Lock. Would be allowed by right in the downtown business district and the FSU district. Um, and then special permit in the neighborhood business district, mill conversion overlay. And then larger developments again in the downtown district and in the FSU district. Um, so there were some small changes here that were proposed by the Legislative Affairs Committee. Um, i- it's really just one, um, and and I'll pull it up now. So in the purpose statement. There were essentially, the purpose statement was very verbose. Um, and the new uh addition basically proposed eliminating. About half of the purpose statement and Counselor Zarella, I don't know if you wanna give some color commentary on on that one.
Sure, uh, and I do see I have two counselors waiting to speak. I'll make this quick. Uh, as as Tom says, the purpose statement's rather verbose, very aspirational. Uh. And actually, there is uh some different wording that I would like to propose that's. Even more simplified to put it more in line with the. Purpose statements in other districts. Uh, I'm not gonna raise that right away because I wanna give Counselor, I wanna give uh Mr. Skroski a chance to finish his presentation on this issue. And then give counselors a chance to ask questions. But basically, this was a a a rough draft purpose statement. Uh, and the Legislative Affairs Committee just felt that it needs to be brought more in line with. A legislatively useful purpose statement of the sort that we see in the other districts.
Right, this is more like marketing language as opposed to what you'd see in his own ordinance.
Uh, so.
I'm wrapped up, by the way.
Oh, you are wrapped up, okay. Uh, Counselor Green?
Yes, my um question has to do with um. In the first line, artisan food and beverage, where it talks about small scale production uh made on site with limited. To no automated processes involved and may include direct sales or to consumption by consumers. But there's nothing in here um defining or helping with um being able to wholesale. From these locations or these services.
Um, in terms of. You don't feel like the the rest of the ordinance allows for host wholesaling? Is that, is that the question?
Well. Because you don't mention it, I mean, is that? And again, it's, I don't wanna assume anything when it comes to this kind of language, but if you don't include it, does that mean that? It can never happen or that because it hasn't been proposed yet, we don't need to address it?
So, uh, Counselor, the language that you're quoting from. Uh, I believe is intended to be expansionary, not restrictive. Uh, in other words. The pr- a production operation of the sort that's defined here. Typically would include wholesale just by its definition. Uh, so that language that you quoted just clarifies that they are also allowed to sell directly to consumers. Um, rather than restricting them only to wholesaling or shipping.
That's right. My interpretation.
But if you have language that you think would make that clearer. Um, this, this is the time to make changes, so.
Right, I guess I don't ever want to exclude it if we've got somebody coming to town who has such a great product that. Other um business ventures may want to buy that directly from a product being. Manufactured here in Pittsburgh and then distribute it. Else elsewhere here in the Commonwealth or across the United States. I just don't want it to to be restrictive in any way on what. People do with their business once it's established and once it's successful here in town.
Would it help in your view if we were to say may include without limitation? Uh, that's a, that's a typical way to phrase something like that in a definition.
I mean, I'd be, I would, yes, that would be more appealing to me if I was reading it as a new. Business entrepreneur wanting to pursue every avenue of revenue streams with my business that's gonna boom in. Uh, artisanal food.
Okay, I can add that as we're speaking here, so without limitation. Direct sales.
Uh, with the close, uh, yep, yep, looks good. Um, that is what I had in mind. Is that what you had in mind, Counselor Green?
That's awesome. Um, and before I move on, um, down at the section. The very bottom before standards where it has the little bullet points. Um. Create a foundation for further growth. Are those, are those going to be um requirements or are those just again with like? Dreamy and we hope that it happens.
Counselor, this is why he wants.
Right, I mean, I'm all for this because I do believe that we have awesome entrepreneurs in the area who are looking. For artisanal manufacturing of food and beverage and for manufacturing of artisan goods. But if that, if I'm the entrepreneur that's. Getting ready to grow and fulfill my dream and then I see these bullet points where it's like. Ooh, am I gonna have to do all that too?
And and that's why Counselor Zarella is gonna propose getting rid of all of that language and having something very quick and simple.
Okay, cuz I don't see any of it marked out.
Right, it was uh, it was not incorporated in the packet. Uh, it was something we've been working on. Uh, sort of behind the scenes and wasn't finished in time to get into the packet, but the uh. Tom and I were grinning at each other as you were speaking, not because what you were saying was at all ridiculous, but because. It's exactly the sort of thing we had been discussing that.
Okay.
Uh, as he said, this was originally sort of worded in marketing terms, like this is why you want artisan manufacturing in your city. Uh, as opposed to purpose statement terms that a zoning board or a planning board would actually look at to evaluate whether something fits within the. Zone or not.
Okay.
So there will, potentially, if if the council agrees with my recommendation, uh, there will be a change to that. Uh, but I would like to. Uh, give Counselor Boshman his shot first.
Thank you.
Counsel Boshman.
Yeah, my question is for Tom. Tom, can you go back over what you said about the light industrial on the uh? When you use the example of teachers' locks. The manufacturing of the old Sentinel building?
Of course, um, so I, the idea behind artisanal manufacturing is it doesn't have a lot of negative effects. Outside of the building. Um, you know, normally you think of traditional manufacturing, it can be extremely loud. It can have emissions that you might not want to live beside, let's say. Um, and you know, hours all throughout the evening. So artisanal manufacturing is smaller scale. Less disruptive to the neighborhood around it and therefore more likely to be acceptable. In a neighborhood business district or in a downtown business district.
My my question, I went somewhere. And I was in a building and. They had light in industrial work in an area, it was called Light Industrial. But where I was compared to the building where it was, the manufacturing was, all you could hear was. The presses running, that they're banging at the presses, making whatever they were making. And I said to the, the like, the customers in there, I said, how do you put up with that noise all day? You could, you know, you could actually hear it, bang, 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 bang. Would that be allowed downtown if I I called a, what do we call Light Industrial? I mean, your difference between a a terminology, Light Industrial may be entirely different to the guy that's in the same. Mini square uh mall. And he's gonna put up with that noise all day.
Counselor, we're not actually making any changes to Light Industrial at the moment. That's a future bundle. This is artisanal manufacturing, which is a a separate category altogether.
Alright, well, because he brought it up and that's why I was asking, alright. Okay, that's uh, that's alright then.
Counselor Van Helsinga?
Um, yes, thank you, uh, Council President. Uh, first, I just want to clarify a point that Counselor Boshman raised. If you turn to uh one eighty-one point six five two one, in the middle of that paragraph, there is the clause that. Where all manufacturing processes in noise, smoke, heat, glare, vibration and odor resulting from the manufacturing processes. Are contained entirely within a building and not detectable beyond the property boundary. So that does address specifically Counsel Boshman's concerns.
Okay.
Uh, then, moving on, just to my point, I'd like to speak in favor of the creation of these uses. I think it's a. A great adaptability as to where um in general our creative economy is going. Um, these types of uses, these small artisanal manufacturers, uh. Small breweries, brew pubs, they are a growing industry in our state and across the country and that um, I think it will very, very much so add to our, our. Our city, make it a great place to work, great place to live and a great place to have fun, so I support it.
Thank you. Uh, Counselor Squalia.
Uh, I was just gonna clarify exactly what Counselor Ben Hasengard clarified uh in the text for Counselor Bushman, so I'm all set.
Excellent. Um. Alright, uh. There are, as I mentioned, two amendments that I would like to propose. Oh, I see, uh. Tom has put up my proposed wording for the. Purpose statement, so I guess we'll tackle that one first and then there's a tiny wording change further down. That the Legislative Affairs Committee had voted on, but that didn't make it into the public notice. Um.
Oh, cor- correct, thank you.
Can you please scroll up so we can read it? Thank you.
To promote. Give everyone a moment to read through that.
Okay.
I'll read it out loud anyway as I.
Right, because it's kind of small.
Yeah, if you want to read it out loud, that'd be great.
Certainly, uh. So, the proposed amendment, which I'll have to have, which I'll have to request that someone else uh. Move for me.
Mm-hmm.
Uh. Would be to delete the entire purpose clause and replace it with the following. To promote the creation and operation of small scale manufacturing and food and beverage production operations. That can operate in a synergistic or otherwise non-disruptive fashion in non-industrial areas. Enabling increased economic versatility and productive use of otherwise underutilized spaces. Such operations may include but are not limited to textiles, hardware, woodworking, metalworking, 3D printing. Or craft brewing and baking.
Hmm, that's good.
I would make a motion to uh amend the proposal accordingly.
Okay.
I have a motion and second. Uh, speaking on the motion, it looks like I have Counselor Squalia.
Yes, um, it it notes um or otherwise non-disruptive fashion in non-industrial areas. But this would be allowed in industrial areas, right? So, do do we want to, it it kind of sounds like. We're saying you can't put in industrial areas.
So, that, I mean, that's a good point. If there's someone who has a better wording for it, I'm open to it. The idea was that. This broadens the options in non-industrial areas, but you can still do this thing in industrial areas. And the table of uses would supersede the purpose statement in all cases.
If we could just add a line to clarify that it it's also allowed in industrial areas. Um, I guess.
Uh.
Just for.
Could we change the word in to the word two?
Oh, I see. Oh, I see the issue, okay, um. That would be one option. Another option would be. We're saying can operate in a synergistic or a non-disruptive fashion in non-industrial areas. Um, so we're discussing sort of the class of operation more than the actual location. Uh, but we could say something like.
If we change the word non-industrial areas, then it wouldn't relate to zoning.
Uh, or or we could. I'm.
Ooh, industrial or non-industrial areas, that sounds good.
That was nice.
Yeah, yeah, that would work. Uh, excellent. Uh, I like Counselor Kishmerik's suggestion, just for anyone who's. Uh, listening but not watching the screen at home, uh, Counselor Kishmerik sent a uh. Message to the council via the text box suggesting the wording in industrial or non-industrial areas alike. Uh. I suppose we would need then uh unanimous consent from the council to allow Counselor Van Hazinga to. Alter his motion uh to include that language if he is amenable.
Yes, please.
If there is no objection. Uh, then the motion that what that is still before the council has been so altered. Uh, to include that language. That being said, if there is no objection to the motion to amend. Then the amendment is made by unanimous consent. Uh, there is now one more very small change in section. Uh, one eighty-one point six five two one, under the heading standards. Uh, immediately following the language that. Um. Was quoted in response to Counselor Boshman. Oh, yes, thank you, Tom, for highlighting that. Uh, what we had in the original was brewing and baking processes are exempt from the odor provision. Uh, the amendment that the Legislative Affairs Committee suggested is brewing, baking and other cooking processes.
Move to accept the amendment.
Second. I have a motion and second to amend. Speaking on the motion. If there is no objection. And we will pass that by unanimous consent. Uh, any further questions or comments on the artisan food and beverage and artisan manufacturing amendment? As thoroughly amended.
Was this amendment voted on, Counselor Zarella, without?
Oh, actually, I'm sorry, I'm not sure it was. Did uh? Counselor Green, was your amendment actually uh taken up by the council? I can't recall. Uh, do you have that?
We did not take it up. It was just a suggestion. To include wholesale.
Okay, I have a. Counselor Kishmerik has moved to adopt the addition of the words without limitation. In the first, in the first paragraph. Uh, do I have a second?
Ooh, second.
I have a motion and second. Speaking on the motion, Counselor Squalia.
Um, I don't actually have a question, um, um, a statement on this motion. I have a statement um after the motion, I guess.
Okay, certainly. Uh, in that case, on the motion to amend. If there is no objection. It is amended unanimously. Uh, on the underlying matter, Counselor Squalia.
Yeah, uh, for for Tom, um, I'm just, just thinking about the, you know, um, the artisan food and beverage, um. Like not allowed in residential districts. Does this affect the the kitchen um licenses? That, um, you know, um, like, uh, like someone will get a residential kitchen license so that they can cook. Uh, and have a small business from their home? Or, I mean, would this affect any other, like a small business that someone might do from their home, like jewelry stamping or? Things like that?
This would not affect home occupations. Those are still allowable, provided that um. They meet the the standards and requirements of a home occupation, which, you know, they're not taking in clients, they're not creating impacts on the neighborhood. Um, in short.
Okay, good, thank you.
Alright, any further questions or comments on the entire artisan package? Seeing none, I'd entertain a motion to express approval of this amendment. So move. I have a motion and second.
Second.
Uh. See, and if there is no objection. The motion passes unanimously. Next section.
Next section is temporary storage. Um, this essentially regulates the temporary storage container. Used uh by time, appearance, use and location. Um, basically, there are some temporary containers that cease to be temporary after they've been on a site for months, sometimes years. Um, there are some temporary storage containers that look. Um, i- in poor uh repair and wouldn't be something you might want to see in in your neighborhood. Um, or they might be in your front yard or or places you might not want to see a temporary portable storage container. So this regulates the time, appearance, use and location. Um, and this was adopted unanimously by the Legislative Affairs Committee.
Any questions or comments? I have Counselor Green.
Um. Yes, and my, I guess my question is, um, we've. We all have seen those, um, you know, the the back end of what looks like a. Semi-trailer um that people are using for storage on their properties and. Um, with these new regulations, it, does it regulate that those. Which are metal or tin or aluminum now have to be covered with some sort of other. Type of siding or so that it doesn't look like it's a tractor trailer. Thing sitting in your property?
It. Still allows for it to look like a tractor trailer thing sitting in your property, but. That tractor trailer thing needs to be there only for a short period of time. It needs to be in a specific area. Um, so it doesn't as much regulate. The appearance except to say if it's in really poor, poor shape, if it's really in disrepair. Uh, that's one thing. I I'm trying to pull up as we're talking here, the actual language so we could take a look at it, but. It it would still allow for what you would think of as a shipping container. Um.
Okay, so we we do or we don't have a problem with the way those. Look, sitting in property as opposed to how long they're sitting there?
Well, I think the the thought process is that there are certain. Situations that necessitate having a a a storage container. Um, you know, whether maybe for purposes of construction, I think, um. You know, you often will see that on on job sites where, you know, they'll have the temporary construction. Storage out there, that's sort of a staging ground. Um, you you might see it in a situation like that or or as a home is getting uh renovation done, something of that nature, so it's. That's the intent, so I. I can certainly pull it up as we're talking here and it, I think, looked as though some others might have had a question too. I guess not. I'm trying to pull it up as we're talking, that's all.
Hey, I'm just concerned, I mean, if we're gonna call it. Temporary portable storage, then it either needs to be. Completely and only temporary or. Completely portable or permanent storage. I'm, I guess I'm confused on if we're gonna define. What it means that are we defining on how long it stays there or how it looks if it's no longer going to be temporary or portable? If it's just gonna be storage?
Um, we can, we could certainly review it, right? I have it in front of us here, um, but. Basically, it's a container fabricated for the purpose of transporting freight or goods by truck, so it is kind of what you would think of. Um, but the regulations are as follows. So in a residential district, you can have one temporary container. Um, per parcel in all districts where residential units located. Um, no storage unit will be permitted on a vacant parcel. Um, they shall be allowed in the required front yard only on a unapproved driveway. Or in a side or rear yard for a period not to exceed ninety days in any twelve-month period. Um, so in other words, you can't have it in your front yard, you can have it in a driveway, you can have it in a side yard or a backyard. Um, and it can't restrict circulation, fire access, utilities, mentor, public right of ways. Um, often we'll see those, maybe even currently in front of a sidewalk. This will explicitly not allow for that. Um, if a building permits been issued for construction or remodeling, then the container is allowed during said period. And must be removed within thirty days of final inspection. Um, and then, you know, even if it's pre-existing, non-conforming, in other words, if it's already a. A storage container that exists today, it would be subject to a minor site claim review. Um, so again, currently we're silent on this in our zoning. This this allows for an additional layer of of authority. Um, and then in business or industrial districts, it's prohibited. Um, except for pre-existing, non-conforming residential uses, once again. Um, shipping and receiving merchandise and goods, provided that it doesn't. Remain stationary for more than thirty days. So in other words, if your business ships, ships items and. That's an allowable use, storing or uh storing of merchandise or goods, you often see that in a restaurant, for example. That needs to store those goods, um, provided it's not kept in the front setback, in parking, fire access or anything. Um, basically, it needs to be outside of you, but it would be allowed. And then, uh, again, the same construction and remodeling purposes. Um, and then it goes further across all districts. It prohibits vertical stacking. Um, an exception could be approved by the building commissioner if it is a place that sells portable storage containers. Um. And then in all zones, they must be kept in good repair, be secured against unauthorized entry and comply with health regulations and cert- uh. Stored on a hard surface. Um, so here are some examples of not good repair incapable of being moved intact. Holes in the container because of damage or rust or it's infected with vermin. Um, and then it can't be used as a place where people live. Um, and they shall comply with all setback requirements uh within the zoning. Um, and they shall comply with all setback requirements, uh, within the zoning. So it doesn't regulate the type of material on the outside, but rather where it is located. And for how long?
And who, um? Who does the finding? Or who, who goes out and inspects whether it's been ninety days or three hundred and? Sixty days?
That would be the building commissioner, um, and, and his inspectors could, could issue fines, um, a- as is the case with other violations of the zoning ordinance.
Okay.
Do you have any further questions, Counselor?
Um, no, I guess not.
Okay, Counselor Squalia.
Um. Um. The, uh, temporary storage container for a residential area. So unless they exist there now. Then you're not allowed to put any. Temporary storage container of any size on your property, front, side, rear yard for more than ninety days, correct?
Correct.
Um. I- is there? I mean, we generally have storage containers and sometimes you think of a storage container, you think of it as a larger size. But, um, I mean, we, we allow like a shed by right. Um, to a hundred twenty square feet. If we were to, if someone were to have a temporary portable storage container that was. No larger than one hundred twenty square feet. Would this definition still apply or would this, um, fall under the, the shed definition?
Generally, Counselor, a shed in zoning terms refers to a semi-permanent structure. Uh, and would not fit the definition given at the top of this proposed, uh, new ordinance. Uh, it's not designed for. Transport by truck and so forth. If on the other hand, it were a. Shipping container that was. The dimensions of a common shed, it would presumably fall within these terms because it doesn't meet the typical zoning definition of a shed.
Um, right, well, it, a, a storage container could be used as a shed. Um, and could be permanently installed just as a shed that might get delivered to your house on a truck. Um. So that, that concerns me that it's a little overly, um. Harsh on that. And then just going into industrial, um, you know, um. Or business, industrial, uh, institutional districts. Uh, we allow portable storage containers as long as they are not visible from the street, they're on a hard surface, et cetera. Um, but, uh, we're not allowed to vertically stack the portable storage containers. Um, for, for any purpose except unless you sell portable storage containers. Now, now these are designed to be stocking. Um, so I don't know if there is any, you know, situation where a business might want to stack. Uh, storage containers for their business, you know, away from view of the street. Uh, maybe we, maybe if that were the case, uh, they could just get a, a permit from the building department. Instead of just flatly not allowing it in, in any business or industrial, um. District. Tom?
It, I think the thought process here was that if. The idea is that the storage containers are allowed in an area that is outside of the. The public view or outside of your butters view. Then stacking said containers might work contrary to that, that assumption because. Of, of the height that it would create and sightlines it would create.
And Counselor, in the event that we did have a business that had a legitimate business necessity to do so. Uh, and they're operating outside of a residential district, they would be free to apply to the zoning board for a use variance. Uh, to permit deviation from these standards. It's a tough sell, but it is for an exceptional circumstance. There is an avenue of relief.
Uh, um, so the reason that we are not allowing stacking just from the get-go, um, with no exceptions. In the ordinance, um, or the zoning law here is that. In case, because it, it's more likely to be visible?
I think that's part, that's part of the story here, and I think it's. Probably a bit of a safety thing as well. Um, I, I think perhaps somebody who sells portable storage containers. Knows how to safely stack them as opposed to. Um. Just a, a, a layperson who decided to stack their portable storage containers and. Um. Eh, you know, danger of tipping. Et cetera, uh, that would follow if not done properly.
Okay, I'm all set.
All right, Counselor Van Hesenda.
Uh, thank you, Mr. President. Um, I think there are times where these storage containers are useful and warranted, uh, for their use. But the key is that they are temporary and the problems arise when they are treated as permanent structures. Uh, they aren't particularly slightly. They aren't designed to be permanent structures. They are designed to be temporary and to move. So I think the intent of this section is really to still allow them to be used where they're warranted, but to make sure if someone's. Intending to use it as a, a permanent s- storage, they should really get a shed or a barn or something like that. Um, because this is not what it's designed to do. It, it doesn't, it has to meet other building standards. And I think it's very simply of, of just making sure that these, um. Storage containers are used as intended.
Thank you. Uh, any further? Questions or comments on this portion? Seeing none, I'd entertain a motion for approval.
Motion to approve.
Okay.
I have a motion and second. If there is no objection.
I object.
All right, in that case, uh, Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Of course. Counselor Boeschmann?
Yes.
Counselor Kuchar?
Yes.
Counselor Gina Tally?
Yes.
Counselor Fleming?
Yes.
Counselor Green?
Yes.
Counselor Kuschmerich?
Yes.
Counselor Schultz?
Yes.
Counselor Squalia?
Nay.
Counselor Van Hesenga?
Yes.
Counselor Walsh?
Yes.
President Zarella?
Yes.
That does pass ten to one.
Thank you. And Tom, you may proceed.
Alrighty, um, the, the next one, I'm actually gonna skip over solar arrays just for a moment because there's a lot of changes there. Um. This, this other one is a bit simpler. Um, marijuana transporter. Um, this just defined marijuana transporter as a component of marijuana establishments. We've had a number of marijuana transporters that have, uh, tried to open up. In the city and currently the closest definition we have. Is a marijuana retailer. If you. Basically match up all of our definitions and as you all know, we have a, a, a limit that we've reached. Um, eh, uh, for licenses for marijuana retailers. Adding this definition would basically allow this as a marijuana establishment use. Uh, pursuant to the marijuana regulations that we currently have.
Counselor Green?
I guess my question is, um, because it sounds so simple, I guess we need even further clarification. So. Does this limit or define? Who actually? Or who is going to be responsible for the transportation of any and all marijuana products? So if I would, let's just say I was. An Uber driver. And got an order to go pick up. Said product from one of our establishments. But my job was really to deliver that product to an entity down the road. Is that a marijuana transporter?
Um, to, it would be a, a business-to-business transportation as opposed to a business-to-consumer. Um, and, and I pulled it up here as, as we're talking. Uh, marijuana entity is, or transporter means an entity not otherwise licensed by the commission. That is licensed to purchase, obtain and possess cannabis or marijuana product solely for the purpose of transporting. Temporary storage, sale and distribution to marijuana establishments, but not to consumers. Um, marijuana transporters may be an existing licensee transporter or a third party. So one example, you know, someone. A transporter might purchase product from Garden Remedies. And transport it to revolutionary clinics for sale at their store. Because there is often that kind of cross. Promotion and sales. So it could be business-to-business or, um, business-to-delivery. Which then goes to the consumer, um, but, but it's never direct to the consumer. That's actually not something we can prohibit through our zoning. Um, because we've already allowed retail cannabis. Um, by extension, we have allowed delivery to the consumer. This is a special business model. I think we've had about two or three of these already that have looked to open up in the city.
Okay, thank you.
Welcome.
Any further questions, comments? All right, I'd like to entertain a motion for approval.
Make a motion to express approval.
Okay.
Thank you. I have a motion and second. If there is no objection. All right, passes by unanimous consent. Onto the solar arrays.
Okay, um, currently our. Zoning ordinance is silent on solar arrays and because of, um, Mass General Law, Chapter forty-eight. It says we cannot unreasonably regulate the, the placement of solar arrays. It's been the city's, um. Moving position since, since that was adopted that we basically allow solar arrays by right anywhere in the city. Um, what we're doing here is creating special permit requirements and criteria for large solar arrays in the city. Um, what you all had seen is the planning board's recommendation. Um, and since then, the Legislative Affairs Committee met and proposed additional changes to that, um. Regulation as well as, um, Counselor Van Hesenga had submitted. Today, some additional revisions that were requested by the Planning Board Chair. Um, so I can, if it's helpful. Walk through those additions from the Legislative Affairs and. Those by the Planning Board that Counselor Van Hesenga had. Added, but I can also take questions first. I don't know how you wanna handle this.
Uh, Counselor Van Hesenga, I see that you have your name in to speak, so I will, uh, ask if, uh, you would prefer to speak to your amendments directly or allow? Mr. Skrowski to introduce them.
I think it'd be fine if Mrs. Skrowski introduced them. I think it'd be easier to have them up on the screen and everybody could see them.
All right, and Counselor Green, uh, is this something that? You need addressed before we begin or? Uh, you just wanna put a marker in?
I'll just put a marker in.
All right.
Thank you.
Okay. So, um, excuse me just a moment. Whoever's phone keeps buzzing, could you please mute yourself?
I'm glad you asked. I thought I was hearing things. Um.
Marijuana.
It is getting late, so, um, all right. Here's what you, what you saw, um, submitted to you in your council materials, your packet. Anything that you see in blue redlined, um, that is the additions from the Legislative Affairs Committee. Um, and I'll pause and introduce each of those. What you see in yellow highlight are the additions that were brought by Counselor Van Hesenga. Um, so the first is in section four, amending, um, non-conforming uses and structures by ending the following. Um, there was just an adjustment to the sentence for clarity. The installation or replacement of accessory solar energy systems that do not increase existing non-conformity or have satisfied. Section one eighty-one, three-five-two, non-conforming structures are allowed. Um, previously it had stated improvements that don't change the use attributes of the basic characteristics are allowed. Um, and there was issue as to what attributes meant. Um, this clarifies that.
And before we move to, I think we'll just, uh, take motions to amend as we go through so that we don't have a pile of amendments at the end. Uh, before we move to a motion on that, I'd just like to note that given the wording. Change, it appears that the last sentence, which is not struck through, is also meant to be deleted. That said, uh, Counselors Van Hesenga and Green, did either of you want to comment on this amendment? You've both got your names in, so I'm just gonna keep coming back to you until we find out what it is that you needed to.
No, I'm, I'm fine going through all the amendments.
Okay. Um. In that case, I'd like to entertain a motion to amend as outlines on that particular amendment.
Motion to amend?
Second.
I have a motion and second. If there is no objection. It is so amended by unanimous consent.
Okay. Section five adds a clause related to the type of visual screening. And it states vegetation or other visual screening shall be provided to screen solar energy system. So. It, it clarifies that there needs to be a screening.
Questions, comments?
Make a motion to amend?
Second.
I have a motion and second to amend. If there is no objection. We'll take that by unanimous consent. It is amended.
One eighty-one, six-six. Um, it stated the purpose of this section is to promote the creation of new large-scale ground-mounted solar. This was adjusted to say instead of promote. To provide for the creation of large-scale ground-mounted solar. We're not promoting it. We're just allowing it to happen. Um, in the right places.
Make a motion to amend?
Second.
I have a motion and second to amend. If there is no objection. It is amended by unanimous consent.
The next change was proposed, um, by Counselor Van Hesenga. Large-scale ground-mounted solar votaic facilities may be constructed as set forth in section one eighty-one, three-one-three, table of principal uses. Subject to the requirements set forth herein upon the issuance of a special permit and site plan approval by the planning board pursuant to section one eighty-one, nine-four. One, eh, well, one eighty-one, nine-five. This just clarifies the special permit process. Every other special permit. Within our ordinance uses similar line, which this just mirrors that.
Motion to amend?
Second.
I have a motion and second to amend. If there is no objection. It is amended by.
The motion?
Oh, certainly on the motion, Counselor Squalia.
Uh, just what is the last part? D, what was that? One eighty-one point six-six-four application requirements? Was that just a, a? A typo in the beginning?
It's weird deleting things. It was just a carryover.
Okay.
I actually hadn't mentioned that yet. But maybe I take that along with the next one.
Yeah, we'll do that.
Oh, I thought you were.
So. No, no, quite all right. It's, uh. It's a complex process. We're gonna have some hiccups as we go through. Uh, so we have the amendment only of the first. Uh. Paragraph. If you could scroll back up briefly.
Yep, sorry.
Uh, just that first highlighted paragraph is the current motion to amend. Uh, so. So if there is no objection, then. We will amend that by unanimous consent. That's so amended.
Next one is this typo. Um, it's just a carryover and then pursuant to the special permit and site plan review process just clarifies its whole.
Move to approve the amended amendment?
Speaking on the motion.
Uh, do I have a second?
Second.
Yes, second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Speaking on the motion, Counselor Green?
I. Just for clarification purposes, I want to make sure that. Anybody and everybody. Now knows that moving forward that all of these large-scale. Facilities will be only issued through a special permit. Do I have that right? That it will need a special permit process in order to move forward with any large solar arrays?
Correct. That is correct.
Okay. Thank you. I'm all set.
All right, I have a motion and a second to delete the typographical error and add the word special permit and in the appropriate location. If there is no objection. Then it is amended by unanimous consent.
Uh, the next group that you see here, um, it just corrects a reference. This is the proper reference to the financial surety section that satisfies one eighty-one, six-six. Seven-three-G. Um, and then pilot. Um. And as applicable as opposed to is required. And as applicable as opposed to is required, so. Execution of a pilot agreement with the city of Pittsburgh prior to operation of the facility comma as applicable because. Um that's actually outside of the scope of zoning that is a a separate issue. And then. The reference at one eighty one six six um instead of four three. Um that just references the proper section of the waiver provision. Um and then this last grouping here is really about um solar in rural residential areas, so. The planning board may waive the Setback requirements of one eighty one six 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 if the board determines that such a waiver does not derogate from the intent of this section and. And is in the public interest, provided however that no such Setback waiver shall be granted in the rural residential district.
Thank you, and if you could scroll up a couple lines real briefly. Uh that first uh reference change. It might just be too small on my screen, but it looks like we have one sixty one six six seven three.
Correct.
Uh. Okay, uh in that case, any questions or comments on this batch of clerical errors?
Yes, I do.
Okay, councillor Green?
Right, pertaining to that description of financial surety. Or surety that satisfies. Uh am I looking for one eight one point six six seven three? Or where where in these definitions does it have anything to do with financial surety?
Correct, six six seven three. So this is the abandoning, are are you all seeing my screen still? Okay. The abandoning and decommissioning section, so financial surety is here. Um proponents of a large scale. Solar vol- voltaic project shall provide a form of surety and then it goes on to describe that. It needs to exceed more than a hundred twenty five percent of the cost of removal. So this is essentially in the event that a solar project uh goes upside down, the city will have the funds to dismantle it.
Okay, and do we keep that in a separate fund? Or who who's the curator of those funds that we're supposed to be collecting upfront in case it goes bad?
It would be either a bond or a bond and escrow or some other similar arrangement uh. That the proponent would be responsible for creating and. Uh. Filing properly and everything.
Correct.
So we as the city would be the custodians of that account?
Or the beneficiaries or however it winds up being termed for the particular financial instrument.
Okay, so would we re- under the requirements? It and maybe I missed it, but I didn't say it. I didn't see that it said that they. Should or would need to be bonded. Isn't that how we get money from them if they're bonded? Or if they need to be bonded in order to do the work that here's our safety net if it goes bad?
That's what this section, uh this financial surety section that Mr. Skroski pointed you to. Uh actually deals with is requiring that they have either a bond or some other equivalent uh surety. To make, that's exactly what this is for, is in case it goes bad, we're covered. Uh we're not on the hook for spending city taxpayer money to dismantle the facility.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Uh so if you could scroll back up to the amendments that we're. Currently considering, um. Alright, so we're. All amendments from line F of six six four down to the bottom of six six five. Are currently under consideration. Uh any further questions or comments on that batch of amendments?
Motion to approve. Okay.
I have a motion and second. If there is no objection. It is amended by unanimous consent.
Um alright, one eighty one six six seven, um instead of design standards, it says project requirements because if you look. The next few sections includes design standards. Um safety and environmental standards, et cetera. Um so it's not really accurate. Basically, the title was design standards and so was the sub- subtitle. It didn't make any sense. They're actually all project requirements. Um and then. Dark sky compliance with um. With any of the lighting that takes place there, and instead of where feasible. Lighting of solar voltaic installation shall be directed downward. Um so that's the expectation, not, oh, please do that if you can, but. That's the expectation of what happens here. Um and I, that's the last one I can see within view, so I guess I'll stay there.
I have a question.
Councillor Squalia?
The uh I like I I like the idea for to be consistent with dark sky requirements, but. Do we define dark sky requirements within this ordinance? And if we don't, maybe we should um reference it?
I believe it's an industry standard, but um. I'd have to check it with our team at BSCS to if that if that is something that we would need to include, that would be a bundle three change where we're. And I I could certainly add it to the list.
Okay, thank you.
Uh do I ha- have, yes, I have councillor Green again.
Yep, um. Sorry, we go into detail about all the project requirements, but I don't see anything about um fencing. Or um how that they're not gonna be able to enter into. The solar field anywhere. Maybe I haven't scrolled down far enough, but. Does it mention anywhere what the requirement for uh fencing or safety is going to be, so it's just not open field?
Correct, so.
Think you might be looking for the next section down, safety standards.
Um right, so visual impact includes fencing and and landscaping, et cetera. And then safety standards gets to um. You know, basically it complies with. Um local fire chief and electric utilities um cooperates with local emergency services. It can be shut down um at a moment's notice in a clearly identified area. Um. I- in terms of. Yeah. I guess access would probably be best served here and in the requirements that it's it's screened.
Does screened mean safe? Um okay, residential uses. Shall be screened from the solar system by means of fencing, planting and or maintenance of trees. But what's the requirement?
Cor- correct, I don't think there is a requirement to create. A secure fence around it and and I think. Eh I I don't know. Yeah, it would probably vary by location, but there are a lot of places, say in a rural residential neighborhood. Where you might not wanna see a um hyper secure fence around a solar array. Um in that it it might look more like a fortress than and even more. You know, obstructive than it currently is that that I think is why we probably haven't seen that before. Um. But it's a fair point with regard to safety. Um I also know there are cases Hollis Hills wanted to do a solar array that actually their. Their livestock could could roam within and the the arrays were way uh raised as a result. Um so there are some instances where you might not wanna have that secure barrier. Um but this would provide the planning board with a degree of. Discretion to make that determination, I think.
I will just note councillor, uh I think you raise a very important issue. But I do think that. This this only addresses zoning approval. It would not necessarily insulate. Uh. Landowners from any generally applicable premises liability law. Uh which would apply to say a low mounted solar array that could. In some way harm local children or something like that. Uh there are existing laws that would. Already cover those kind of issues.
And I did, um site access shall be man- maintained to a level acceptable to the local fire chief and emergency medical services. So there is that additional layer. If the fire chief looks at it. Uh and says this is unsafe, it wouldn't be allowed.
Okay, I guess I'm just thinking of of our ci- city of Pittsburgh solar array that's down. Um off of Sawyer Passway that. Um. Yeah, I. I guess I'm just concerned on the safety. That if it's just left unchecked. Who's to say that? You know, somebody doesn't go in with a brick and start damaging the solar arrays because they're. I don't know, angry about climate change or something. I don't, I don't know, but I just where we have nothing. Nothing really here that talks about. Fencing or safety of the equipment itself. Or I don't, I don't know, I'm just hypersensitive when it comes to this because I. Have a feeling it's gonna bite us in the butt at some point.
So what I would say is if it's really about the damaging of private property, um. If if that were a concern of the solar developers, I would suspect we would have seen more of that in applications to the city. Um for the arrays and for what it's worth, we've had, I think, about five of them. In my time here at the city and none of them have proposed more stringent security measures, so.
Okay.
It it could be a concern in the future, but at least for their purposes as a private developer, it doesn't appear to be.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, uh if you could scroll back up to the current. Amendments?
Is this?
Uh yeah, just the. Just down to the bottom of section subsection A.
Okay.
Any further questions or comments on this section? Can I have a motion?
Motion. Second.
I have a motion and second to amend as detailed. If there is no objection. It is amended by unanimous consent.
Okay, um the the next grouping. Just. Kind of follow the same. Thought processes before. Um. So it had this whole section providing an opaque year round buffer between uses um and then this land clearing section. Um. Oh, you know what? That that was a mistake. I'm sorry, it's getting late, folks. Um. Alright. Section E, oh, sorry.
Uh you, it looked like it was just repeated down below under the safety environmental standards. It looked like that, why it was removed?
A- and that's why I was, I only letter G was intended to be deleted. I think some more got deleted by mistake. And this is just deleted because it's replicated in a different section. Um and since we're here. Um unreasonable land clearing as determined by the planning board is prohibited. As opposed to. Noting that clearing in some cases is acceptable, it's be more explicit that the planning board will not allow unreasonable land clearing. And that's it on this page. I promise we're almost finished, folks.
Move to approve as amended.
Second.
Alright, I have a motion and second to amend. Hearing no objection. It is approved by unanimous consent. Sorry, amended by unanimous consent.
Okay, um just some slight changes to the lettering here. Um and then financial surety. Uh an independent consultant retained by the city at the expense of the project can proponent. Basically, we would get an an engineer who would make the determination of how large that surety should be. Um this surety amount shall be based on a fully inclusive estimate. Of the costs associated with removal prepared by qualified engineer. The amount shall include a mechanism for calculating increased removal cost due to inflation. Um so this is just making sure that whatever surety it is that we have. Will allow us in the event that it needs to be removed, we'll have enough money to be able to do that.
Any questions or comments?
Make a motion to amend accordingly?
Uh I would, very briefly, I'd like to comment. I would suggest that based on the insertion of the first uh clause there, independent consultant retained by the city. We changed the words prepared by a qualified engineer to. Prepared by such independent consultant. I believe that's the intent.
Yep, yep. Um. Now I'm. Okay.
Yeah, technically a a qualified engineer, there. It's that doesn't have to be a professional engineer. Anyone can be qualified engineer.
I'll adjust my um proposed amendment.
Thank you. I do have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and second to amend as outlined. If there is no objection. It is amended by unanimous consent.
One eighty one six six eight, um just basically says that a special permit can be. Um granted if the board makes the following findings and originally this section was not. Termined as findings nowadays. Um the language was just adjusted accordingly.
And this is not inclusive of one eighty one six six eight eight, which is a substantive change which we'll address in a moment. Uh but all the rest is grammatical semantic.
Eh with the exception of what I've got highlighted here.
Any questions on the semantic changes? Can I entertain a motion?
I'm moved.
I have a motion and second. If there is no objection. It is amended by unanimous consent.
And one eighty one six six eight is just an additional measure that um. Do you wanna speak on councillor Srela?
Uh sure, I will real quick. Uh basically, it's just. A lot of these findings are worded in terms of minimizing or maximizing certain factors. Uh I thought it was. Why is to include a catchall provision that gives the board the authority to say. Even though all these factors are duly maximized and minimized, it's still a bad project for the neighborhood, so we're going to reject it. And that's basically what six six eight eight does is say. You know, okay, so maybe you've minimized stormwater runoff. But there's still too much, even at a minimum level. Or maybe you've minimized land clearing, but you're still clear cutting far too much, even at a minimum level. Uh. It just makes it clear that there is an objective standard, not only a relative standard. And I have councillor Van Hasenga.
Um to that proposed amendment, would it make sense um to just add at the end of it at the determination of the planning board?
Uh well, it's a finding of the planning board that they'll have to make, so. I think that's necessarily implied. Um.
Okay. Well, you're 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 right when I look at it in its entirety.
Okay. Uh in that case, I'd like to entertain a motion for that amendment.
Motion to amend?
Second.
I have a motion and second. If there is no objection. Is amended by unanimous consent.
Right. And lastly, the planning board had um proposed some adjustments to the language uh of the definitions and um. These highlighted amendments were brought forth by councillor Van Hasenga on behalf of the board. Um so a solar voltage system that occupies more than seventeen hundred fifty square feet of surface area or more that is structurally mounted. On the ground and is not roof mounted and has a minimum name clay- name plate capacity greater than ten kilowatts DC. Um and then. Uh the the next follows that as well. Um same kind of language, just some clarifications really.
Um just to to in the first section there, um in the second section you remove. Um more than or more, but in the first section you didn't remove more than. You didn't strike it out.
Here.
Yeah.
Okay. These are really semantic changes at the end of the day.
Yeah.
Alright, uh.
Motion to amend?
Do I have a second? I have a motion and second to amend. If there is no objection. It is amended by unanimous consent and we now have the fully amended solar array. Amendment before us.
Motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion and second to express approval of this amendment. If there is no objection. The motion passes by unanimous consent. And I believe that concludes our. Businesses, I do know that. Uh. President Emeritus Kuschmeric had. Something he'd like to say during our announcements period.
I, I like that title, am I allowed to retain that?
You have my permission.
Uh, i- in all seriousness, I thank you, um, President Sorella. I, I just uh wanted to take a brief moment and I promise I will be brief, I know we've, uh, we've had a long meeting this evening. Uh, this is my last. Meeting as a, uh, as a Pittsburgh city councillor that I'll be a part of and uh wanted to take an opportunity. To thank uh the countless uh residents and constituents uh throughout Pittsburgh uh for giving me the opportunity to serve this city. Uh, it has been a truly an honor uh and a pleasure. Uh, to serve uh the city and its uh businesses and residents, um. These past eight years. And uh it's all been a pleasure to work alongside, um, not only this council, but the councils uh that have come before this. One, um, and uh, you know, both Mayor Wong, uh, and now. Working alongside uh Mayor Dean Atali, now in his sixth year, it's been an incredible opportunity to work with uh him in this. Administration, uh, I, the city is on a clear, um. Trajectory forward. And I'm excited to continue that work uh at a different level. And so, um, again, I, I wanna thank everyone who's been um a part of helping to move this city forward. And in particular, I wanna call attention to um, the city employees. Who, you know, each and every day uh perform so many tasks that help this city thrive and flourish. And um, I think it's, it's easy to, to think of, you know, city employees is just part of this big bureaucratic structure, but at the end of the day, there's. There's several hundred employees that make this city work each and every day. Uh, they make it a better place to live, to work and to invest, and the city doesn't move forward without them. And it's been truly a pleasure uh getting to know them, uh, to get to know their work. Uh, and, and helping that city move forward. And uh, so, uh, again, uh, thank you to the residents uh for giving me this opportunity to serve you as a city councillor. And uh, I'm excited to serve uh the city of Pittsburgh uh in a different capacity at the state level. Uh, President Sorella, I know you are already working with me on, I, excited to come off of um. Uh, these zoning changes, I know you're excited to work with me on uh, on some statewide um zoning. Uh, changes and excited to uh, to have the opportunity to work with each and every one of you. Uh, to accomplish uh some of those legislative items uh at the, at the state level. Um, and I'll, I'll. Leave our residents just with this thought of, you know, I know it's easy to, to really focus on government and, and thinking that. The impact of a, um. Of government really starts with the president and, and impacting your day-to-day life, and I would argue that. It's the exact opposite, that it starts with the local um elected officials that you put into office and that. At the end of the day, the things that impact your life so much from the, from the roads to the services that you receive and the neighborhoods that you live in. Uh, those are impacted by elected officials uh that's um, that are, that are right here in your own backyard. And they love the work that they do and they serve you diligently. Um, and it's a, it's been a privilege and an honor to be a part of those um, those legislative uh bodies. That helped to make those meaningful improvements uh to your city. So again, thank you to everyone and I look forward to working with and, and representing you uh in the years ahead.
Thank you very much, uh, both for. A very nice farewell and for your years of service, and I look forward to working with you in the future. And I have to apologize, I neglected to uh take a vote to continue the. Public hearing since we're not closing it. Uh. I would like to entertain a motion to continue the hearing to March second. Uh, actually I have that motion from Counselor Van Hazinga, seconded by Counselor Walsh. Um. So if there is no objection. Then the hearing is continued to March second for the consideration of bundle number two at that time. And that actually concludes our agenda for the evening.
Second.
I have a motion and second to adjourn. If there is no objection, we are adjourned. Thank you, all of you.
Good night, everyone.
Thank you.